This is just really, really, really casual. I was hoping for at least a few public questions or comments for you that would, in my mind, help you guys understand where the constituents are. But we also have a pretty good idea what some of the questions are out there, some of the projects, and some of the things that, for good or not, get people really talking and really going. And maybe you have a viewpoint on some of the construction or growth projects, or something else that you might know about. Please feel free to talk about that. So if you take a couple of minutes, we can start with Mr. Van Der Brook. Introduce yourself and tell us about your personal life and your political experience.
Okay. I'm Dave Van Der Brook. First place I lived was on a farm, a mile south and a quarter mile west of the cemetery here. So when I started school, I started at kindergarten here in Samlin Public. And then after that, because the Samlin Christian School didn't have kindergarten, I went to Samlin Christian and to Western. And then we moved in 1996 when I was a ninth grader. So then I graduated from Melford High School, went to Northwestern College, graduated from there. In 1974, I started teaching high school math and science. Taught three years other places, so then in 1977, I got a job at Hartley High School, which became Hartley Melbourne High School, and now it's HMS High School, Hartley Melbourne, Samlin. And I taught math and science in the high school till the mid-1990s, and then I became a full-time tech director. And I did that until I retired in 2014. I also, for almost 40 years, drove bus route and drove to activities. So since I retired in 2014, I've been doing some substitute teaching, and I also still drive, substitute for bus routes, and I drive activities. So I'm running for school board. The main reason is because of what a strong school district has meant to our family. I worked for them for 36 years, got two daughters, and both those daughters went through all 12 years there. Got their academics there, also got a few things, music, drama, speech, athletics. And I think that the academics and the other things there gave them a good start for college, their careers, and their lives now. And that's what I want for every student in our school, to have that same quality education. I think another reason I'm running, I think it's very important and essential to our communities to have a real strong school district. And I'm real pleased that both Hartley and Samborn, in the next few years, are going to get, each get a new school building. And I think that's really going to make a statement to people in our towns and people that come and look at our towns, of the importance of education in here, and how having a good school and good facilities is important to our borders. Thank you. That's my statement.
My name is Aaron Weecamp. I live in town here in Samborn. I was born in Hartley in '81. Went to HMS my whole life, graduated in '99. Since then, I went to college at Park, Titan, Sheldon, and I've worked at Demco in Boynton for 20 years. And I'm running for city council. And I just want to be involved in the community and not looking to change anything, just be involved more or less.
That's important.
And get married shortly. You done?
Yep. I'm Randy Lyman. I've lived in Samborn all my life. Graduated high school in 1975 on a Sunday afternoon, and Monday morning, I started working for the city of Samborn. I worked for 37 and a half years with the city of Samborn. And 2010, I retired with my, I first, after 37 and a half years, and started doing just odds and ends, working for a contractor here in town, and then doing odds and ends, honey-do jobs on my own for, I always said when I was growing up or working, that little old ladies and the little old men, that can't afford to have a regular plumber or handyman come work for them. I was going to do that, and that's kind of what I'm doing, helping them out. After I quit with the city, I worked for a while, odds and ends, and then we had a councilman resign, and I got appointed or was asked to fill his spot until, for the next election. And I decided to run for council and got elected again. Last year, I was, well, this year, I guess, January, I was appointed mayor. And so now I am not council, but I'm the mayor, and now I am running officially for the mayor's seat in Samborn. When I first started, it was with the council, I was hoping to get things, just keep things going in the right direction, and more or less to keep the sewer plants and everything going. And now we've started our, another job, or another phase of the sewer plant, or wastewater treatment plant. And now we're in the process of starting a water treatment plant for drinking water, which is where in dire needs are, so that's about the extent of mine.
Alan Visser. Lived in Samborn most of my life. Served on the school board for the Christian School the last three years. I worked for a hardware company out of Memphis, Tennessee. My office is in our house. I travel all over Northwest Iowa for work. I get in a lot of towns and see a lot of different things, talk to a lot of other city council members who own businesses in those towns. I'm just mainly running for city council to be informed and be involved and know what's going on in the city.
My name's Tony Deam. I grew up over in Reinbeck, Iowa, just south of Waukesha Falls. I've been a resident partly for 21 years. I'm running for District 2 seat on the HMS school board. I spent eight years in the military, six of that in the Army National Guard, or the Iowa Army National Guard, two of it in the Army Reserve. I've got two children. I've got a son who's a freshman this year, and a daughter who's in middle school. The main reason I'm running for school board is for my children. I want to be a parent who steps forward and speaks out for the community, for our children, for our students, for our teachers. As a school board member, I feel that it's their responsibility to be servants to the community and to be their voice. I currently work at Rosenbleu Machine Tool in Sheldon, been there for 21 years. Started out as a laborer, making parts, just like everyone else. Served a number of different jobs there, and currently the quality supervisor over in their Spirit Lake facility. My main job there is to solve problems and fix problems. So I'm very familiar with being able to troubleshoot and recognize and identify what the issues are, the root of the problem, and be able to put corrective measures in place to try and keep them from coming back up. I truly want to see the best for HMS School District, and I want to see us be strong for the future, both financially and academically, for not only our faculty, but our students.
I'm Tim Devitt. I'm running for the Samborn City Council position. I've lived in Samborn since 1992. I worked for the Samborn Savings Bank, and I've been there the whole time. I've served in a lot of different committees and boards within the community over the years, and I've been on the council for quite a few years. I feel it's important that the community continue to keep its infrastructure in top shape, or, and also be fiscal responsible, and proud of our community, and would like to see it continue that way.
I'm Brad Visser. Born and raised in Samborn. Been on the city council for the past 11 years, about, work at, I have a state bank, and similar to Jim, just enjoy being on the council, like, you know, being involved, and help Samborn maintain what we have, and grow, and search out new opportunities with additional growth. There's some exciting things going on here, and we've got good guys to work with, and just like to continue that process.
Well, that was short and sweet.
It's up for debate.
Ladies, all good? Jim, you had some questions for the school board guys, you thought, maybe? I said, "thought, maybe." And I'm not putting him to the council guys, because he tells you.
I don't know if I have any questions. We're excited too about the new facility here. The architects and engineers are getting ready for the spring, is what they're telling us anyway, when they started. And the only thing I know right now is what I read in the, in the count, in the board minutes, but, you know, they're supposedly, they'll have the new elementary done in Hartley. And they'll move the elementary kids in there this fall, and then at the same time, they'll move your kids here into what's the elementary now, and then they can get started on taking the old part down and get building on this one.
Growth sounds like a really great thing, but yet every time somebody tries to do something, gets pushed back. Or am I just imagining that? We want to grow, we want more people, we want more jobs. And that's all great stuff to have, I would think. It's supposed to make the tax base better, businesses better because you have more customers. But what's the downside of some kinds of growth? Or where is, where is it right? Where's that magic, you know, from where you are?
What are you talking about, growth? People-wise or business-growing?
You tell me.
Well, I feel, you know, Samborn, we, we don't have a whole lot of new businesses, but we keep getting people coming up and starting something. We got one coming up on Main Street that we've worked with in the last couple of weeks that, for refinishing furniture, or whatever you want to call it. And I think, Samborn, population-wise, the people have, we have drawn people to Samborn, but I think we're, you know, it's kind of a bad thing to say, but we're kind of a bedroom community for, for, you know, like Sheldon, or, because we have quite a few people that work out of town. I think they like that, you know, what Samborn has to offer. So I think, myself, that helps us to draw people to Samborn. And I think if we keep working, the businesses will come. You know, there's, people are always trying to start something, so I think that'll, that'll come eventually. That's my, my opinion, I don't know if right, wrong, or otherwise, but...
I don't get it. I personally, I don't know if there's a right or wrong, I'm just wanting to know what your perspective is. So what are some tools that the city utilizes to try to attract? Start with residents.
I think it just, what we have to offer. We have a new swimming pool, a golf course, the trails. We have the park ward that keeps trying to put things together for summertime softball, baseball leagues. It's just, I think it's, community-wise, I think there's just a number of people that help out to try keeping the people, the kids busy, so families do move to town.
Schools and churches play a, I didn't go on that too. When it comes, excuse me, when it comes to the school districts, I think growth is essential. Obviously, you have to keep growing your school districts to bring people in, bring more parents in. Along with that, one of the big things is, is community and parent involvement. As you grow, it requires more human resources to keep everything running and functioning properly. And it gets harder and harder with everyone's busy lifestyles nowadays to maintain that level of involvement and maintain your jobs and your home lives and everything else. So I think it's a big, it's big that parents, community members get involved in whatever they can. Donating a little bit of time here or there, students being able to get community service hours and get involved in the community. Those type of things are what's needed to continue growing and developing our community. The other part of that is there's a huge financial responsibility when it comes to growth. When you grow, obviously, there's more financial responsibility involved, to be able to have the foresight to, to look forward, to, to make sure that when we build these new schools, that we put things in place to ensure that we can maintain them, so that we don't, we're not looking at having to rebuild, you know, 15 years down the road. Taking care of what we have financially, and ensuring that we're taking care of our faculty and our athletic programs, all of our extracurricular programs, whether it be band or choir. Again, that's all community involvement and financial responsibility as well.
So is the financial piece of it the community's responsibility, or is it the employee's responsibility?
The financial part of it is, there's a lot of involvement by everyone. I happen to be on the HMS Athletic Roosters. I know there are a lot of parents involved in that. That spend a lot of time, you know, going to local businesses and asking for money, and I know it can tax our local businesses as well. I mean, they're, they're being asked from, you know, 10, 12 different directions to contribute to different programs and fundraisers. And I know our, our community is great about supporting our athletic programs and supporting our extracurriculars. But we need to be looking to, you know, from the community side, how can we continue to draw those businesses into the community to continue to have that financial support there.
Most of the finances of, of school come from the state, but there's some real important things that people in the local district do. Probably the most important thing is a bond issue. And we got, we've passed several of those since we've, our schools have gone together. We built onto this school first, and we built onto the high school, now we're building the elementary school, and then we'll build a new middle school. So that, that's the most important thing. But there are other funds, there's what's called a physical plant and equipment, by the, and we vote on that, I'm thinking it's maybe every 10 years or so. But that brings in money that the school uses for buses, electronic equipment, smaller projects that they can get done without doing a bond issue. So there's important things that people do financially. Probably Tony mentioned it, the most important thing they do is just support the schools otherwise, with your involvement in the schools as much as you can, with your own kids and with your grandkids.
So you guys got anything? Okay, I'm gonna announce this one of our council candidates first. The infrastructure, well, you've got some big infrastructure projects underway at some level, you know, some phase, whether it's in the engineering phase or construction phase, or, correct me if I misread. Technology is advancing at a crazy fast rate. How do you think that the stuff that you're working on right now are doing when you're facing some of the technology, the technological changes, whether, and I can't even begin to guess, when I'm thinking about utility services, what some of those might be? Is there any ideas, and where do you think the city of Samborn is right now in that battle, is it a race, is it a just keep up?
Most of it's controlled by the DNR. But we use good engineers. Like to say we do the, not the best as far as the top-of-the-line processes. We do what's most reasonable and gets the job done.
For capacity or for, like, modern technology?
For capacity, or, you know, for whatever. We don't need to be on the cutting edge. As a town of 1,400 people, we need to get the job done. And of course, it all comes down to what the DNR allows us to do, which is usually a big holdup, so...
That's insightful.
Well, it's probably not telling me anything.
It's putting it in a little, for me personally, a little bit different context, so yeah, it's there, but that was kind of like smacking you around with, it's DNR that does a lot of this, you know what I mean? So I can imagine. It might be like, okay, school! Samborn is doing its very best with, with its resources to put out the best affordable for the needs. How do you see the school keeping up with the needs of, and it's not just Samborn, it's going to be Hartley, it's Sheldon, it's wind turbines, it's solar panels, it's whatever. How do you guys see that? And I'm speaking just on utilities, not our cell phones and our self-driving cars. How do you see guiding the academic structure, or maybe it's a lab, or some other piece of the education system at HMS, in its technology needs?
A lot of that is driven by the Iowa core curriculum, and our academic requirements that we have are established by that. Obviously, there's technological needs, but I think just being able to stay in the loop with what is available to us. And, you know, in an ever-changing world, it's hard to know what the right thing is. So being informed, I think, is probably the most important part about that, in order to make sure that we're making the most sound decisions for the students. Obviously, again, you go back to the huge financial investments in a lot of technology nowadays, and you just can't throw your money at every new technology advance that comes by. So I think our current school board's done a pretty, pretty good job with, with looking at that, where students are supplied with Chromebooks. And that gives them a huge accessibility to a wealth of knowledge. You know, nowadays, if you ask somebody a question, and they don't know the answer, they're going to tell you, "Well, I'll just Google it and find out." The technology and the, the knowledge is out there, so being able to provide our students with the ability to tap into that, and to learn to work as a team and collaborate, and be self-expressive and creative, that'll be the challenge moving forward. School, when I went to school, it was all, all about memorization. You had to memorize, you know, Encyclopedia Britannica was your best friend. Now Siri and Google are your best friends. So learning ways to be able to adjust to that and make that available to our students is going to be huge moving forward.
And it's not just a initial cost of technology, it's the ongoing cost. No, all of, all of us, as we sit here, I pay 160-some dollars for cable TV and internet access every month, you know, that to our, our parents, that would be unbelievable. I was, I'm old enough that my two girls were out of school before I had to give them both a smartphone plan. And I'm sure you, those of you that have kids, if all your kids don't have a smartphone, they're surely agitating for one. And, and the school has that same ongoing cost. Every year, it seems like there's more computers, every year, the school has to increase their bandwidth a little bit, because nobody likes to get on the internet and wait more than, you know, a snap of fingers for something to show up on your screen. And when you have the majority of kids, by far, in the school now, all have a computer device that they work on. Everybody's got one-to-one, pretty much down to the, the elementary. If they don't take them home, they have them available. So you have a big continuing cost of that also. So that's where we're fortunate to have a community cable TV. And also, we work with Evertech, so we work with our community to provide our, our internet access. And that really is essential. I know in any of your businesses, you know, if the network goes down, you're pretty much shut down. Nothing goes anymore. So that's not only an initial cost, but it's a continuing cost. And it's one that comes out of that budget every, every month that they have to pay for.
I would like, you talked about communication and being informed. So I would like to start here with you, Mr. Visser, and tell me one or two ideas you have, that you would keep those connections going, the city's needs, how you communicate it, and then who would you reach out to for those answers, besides the engineers? How do we bring it back home?
As far as the city, different needs?
Yeah, communicating needs. Okay, so we're looking at this new, the water treatment plant, and I've got some technologies and need to add, some certain skilled work that's required. So they're going to train the local guys, but those guys are going to have their 37 and a half years and be gone. So the kids in school now are going to be a generation miss, but it'd be their kids, we might keep them here so their kids take those jobs. How do you communicate those needs with the school, for example, or with NCC? How do you identify those connections to keep things growing and working together without, you know, some big, major setbacks in the way?
I think some of the work-study programs that are out there nowadays, to get the kids involved, to see the inner workings of, you know, the city, whether they're in the grocery store, rubber store, local service station, and Prairie View out there, you know, they have some stuff going, NCC, they get programs, they're better. But just getting them involved is the big thing. Yeah, we're all, we have AG in Main Street, we need to get, you know, the people involved to get, you know, that transition in place. It is difficult. Getting them involved is the big thing. And they're all busy, 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 and busier with young families, but you need to take some time and just invest in the community.
Employees are the toughest thing in Northwest Iowa, you know, as far as finding good, educated, or even just dependable people, unfortunately. So we've got to figure out ways to make, or to encourage our younger people to stay in Northwest Iowa. Seems like they go to school here, go to college, and don't come back. I've got three daughters, all did the same thing, you know, all different places. We've got to make it so it's attractive, our communities are attractive to the younger families to come back and have... Our communities are attractive to the younger families to come back and, and have their families and have a career. Part of that is making sure we've got jobs that will allow them to have a career here and not just survive. It's a difficult question. I don't have an answer for it, so.
Is that a core question?
What's that?
Is that a core question of where we are? Got some ideas?
When it comes to the schools, you know, it's more and more difficult to involve the high, the, the high schools in some of those programs. I know a lot of our businesses, including Rosenbourn, they bring in college students. And they show them, you know, they, they, they call it development days. Just so that they can introduce a lot of those college students and even some of the high school students now to, you know, a non-IT job. A lot of the younger generation, you know, they're looking into the IT fields, the programming and the web development. And, you know, they're looking for those IT-based jobs. But our communities and our local businesses struggle in just the, the labors and trades just to provide production workers to keep facilities running. When your unemployment rate is, is two and a half percent. You know, the people that aren't employed don't want to be employed at that point. So it's, it's creating the interest in going into those fields. And, and helping our, our students realize that it, it doesn't have to be, you don't have to be a lawyer. You don't have to be a doctor. You need a career that you can invest your life in, hopefully something that you enjoy doing. You know, and, and that's where a lot of the extracurriculars and, and some of the programs, the FFA. You know, it's huge for our farmers to get our students involved in programs like that to, to keep that interest alive and keep them moving down those career paths. Thank anybody who's paying any attention to Mike Rowe on TV. He's done a good job of bringing awareness to those types of jobs. That, yeah, they're dirty jobs, but somebody has to do them. And the pay rate for those is getting better and better. And my question beyond that, on the city club, so I'm running for it. Are we paying our employees enough to want to keep them here to entice their, their kids or their neighbors' kids to want to stay and maybe work for the city someday? Or even just other businesses in town? Is the city or the people in the town supporting these businesses enough to make them financially stable enough that 20 years down the road, somebody wants to retire? And like, oh, those guys made a good living at that job. I could see myself taking that over someday and doing it. I think a lot of that comes from support within the city for those current jobs they have and to get new businesses in the town. We need employees, but we also need to ensure everyone is using what we have available when they can. Not driving out of town to go buy this here and buy that there. I work with small hardware stores and lumberyards all over Northwest Iowa. They all struggle. And a lot of it is people aren't supporting them the way they are. They're driving to Menards, they're driving to Long Beach Home Depot. And are cities, are schools, are they supporting the local businesses as much as they can? And I'm not laying any blame on the school or the city right now, so I don't take that the wrong way. All I got.
Okay, well, I, I think, you know, I'm gonna say schools, but the kids nowadays, you know, from when they're probably eighth grade freshmen, you know, the schools are trying to have them pick a career. And they've changed, they've changed that career half a dozen times before they graduate. And then they go to college and then they're picking out another career. You know, the kids don't know what they want to do. When I started, when I was in high school, I was gonna go into law enforcement. I was gonna be a cop. I worked the summer, first summer for the city and they came and offered me if I would stay in town and, and work for this, for the city. And I debated and talked to my folks and I finally decided, well, I'd stay, I'd do it for a year and then go on to college. Well, two years later, I was married. Three years after that, we had our first child. So things change, you know, it's, it's hard to get somebody unless they're really have it in their mind what they're gonna do. I don't think, you know, most kids really know what they're gonna do unless they've seen somebody else doing it, you know. Like Alan says, you know, are they getting, are they making a decent wage, you know, is it something that I want to do? You know, it's kind of hard to predict or tell kids what they're gonna do. They have to have that gut feeling themselves, I think. So the communication ends of it, yeah. You know, we try hiring at the city, we try hiring somewhere else. Kids that, you know, maybe they'll stick around or if they're gonna go to college, maybe they'll come back and help out. And we have with the light plant, we have, you know, a Sanborn kid that went to, graduated from HMS. He went to NCC and he's working at the light plant. So it's just, they have to have their own feeling. I don't think we can dictate to them what they're gonna do or what not do. But I think it's just, they have to work on it to get that feeling, so.
I would agree with Randy. I went to college part-time, didn't know what I wanted to do. And 20 years later, I still don't know what I would do, so I, that's why I'm at where I'm at. But kind of the same sense in any job, whether it's the city or wherever. You get somebody started and they take interest and five years later, they've developed into possibly someone that could run the whatever. It's just the character of the person will go a long way. But yeah, I work out of town, but I love Sanborn, so I wouldn't change that. I don't plan on moving, so.
I, I know you mentioned supporting local businesses. I, I think the schools try to do that. I also think that it's not always easy for them to do that because they've got a responsibility to, to get prices where they can to save tax money. But also it's, there's so much, the way you order things now is at your computer. We know our biggest retailers are, are online. But also Randy mentioned jobs and stuff. I think that me working as a teacher for 40 years and you working for the city for 37 and a half years, I think we're a thing of the past. You know, I, I look at my kids and I look at young people, they change jobs a lot. They have a lot more access to different jobs. It's easier to learn different jobs because they're online. And so that's another thing that's different in our society. And I think that that, that learning online, a lot of the graduates of HMS, when they graduate, they, a lot of them have 30 hours or more in college credit already. They go online and they learn that. They get those credits. That's a tremendous advantage. If you put kids through college or if you're in the process of putting kids through college, you know what a year of college costs or if you paid for yourself. So to have a year done when they get out of high school or more is a big advantage. And we see that same thing with our teachers. A lot of our teachers not only got part of their degree, but maybe all of their degree by going online. And that's the way, I think that we're gonna retrain people. I think it's nice for Sanborn that you're able to rebuild your school right here in the center of town. So you've got that, that school is really available to people right in the middle of town here. As far as online learning, if a library doesn't satisfy something like that, maybe possibly the school can help out with that. Because that, that's something that we have the infrastructure for, the electronic infrastructure, to get people online so they can use the internet, so they can get out to where they need to be.
Any questions? Questions for each other? Well, I'm out of questions. So I, you know, I can't say cheese, damn. All right. Okay, gentlemen, I apologize for, you know, the really quiet audience and the limited things to get you going. But at least you had a chance to think some things through that might be an issue or that you know is an ongoing project or whatever it is, something to be looking forward to. And you get to share it now. So thanks very much for taking your time to do this. I'll shoot out an email and let you know where you can go watch yourselves online. Get a little something to take for you. Can I say something else you might say?
Thanks for giving us that opportunity.
Thank you for putting this together.